We are ready to start tonight's meeting. Thank you all for coming, and we have all the council members in place, so if everybody can find a seat. That's what I love about Palo Alto, everyone is so collegial, everyone just like, find a seat, and everybody gets a seat, so thank you all so very much, and thank you for coming out on this first Monday of the new year, I really appreciate your being here, as I'm sure my colleagues do too, as well as staff, so thank you all for coming. Would clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Berman. Councilmember Burke. Councilmember DeBois. Councilmember Philseth. Mayor Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Niss. Councilmember Scharf. Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wolbach.
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much. So, as you all know, the order of the business this evening is the election of the mayor and vice mayor, and first, I'll call for nominations for the mayor, and anyone can nominate a nominee for the mayor, and it does not require a second, a person can also nominate themselves, and after that, the person who's making the nomination can speak to the nomination, the person being nominated can also speak, any other council members can also comment, and members of the public will also be heard, so if any member of the public wants to speak to a nomination of a mayor or vice mayor, please fill out a card and send it to the clerk over here, to my left. So with that, I have a light from Councilmember Philseth.
Thank you very much, and Happy New Year. I'd like to nominate Greg Schmidt for mayor. Going into his eighth year on council, Greg has amassed a huge amount of experience, which will serve the community well.
Councilmember Philseth, I think let's hear all the nominations, and then we'll come back to you, if we could, but I appreciate, I appreciate the enthusiasm, though. Councilmember Niss.
You're looking simply for a name at this point.
At this moment, yes, please.
I would nominate Pat Burke.
Okay, so we have two nominations, I see no more lights, so, yes, Councilmember Philseth, would you care to speak to your nomination?
Sure, I think, as I said, I think in addition to serving as vice mayor this past year, Greg also chaired the finance committee, which is a critical function for the city. I think Greg has pushed very hard for us to really understand the structural nature of the city's finances, which I believe is a long-term, critical issue. After six years of economic boom, we know that there's going to be another recession sometime, the time delay of foundations is during the good times, not once the crisis arrives. Greg thinks long terms, and one of his strengths is his focus on data and numbers in decision-making, which will be an excellent orientation as we head into 2016. In his seven years on council, Greg has served the city with dedication and integrity, and as vice mayor, I believe Greg and the mayor, current mayor, made a strong leadership team this year. I thought Greg's quantitative bent, together with Karen's expertise and passion on social services, made a potent and balanced combination. There's a lot of talent and passion on this council, the job of the mayor is really to set an environment to get the best contributions from the entire council membership, not necessarily come up with all the ideas, and I think Greg will be very good at this. He'll strike the right balance, he's collaborative, respectful, and has demonstrated his ability to work constructively with everybody, he's ready to take the chair. Finally, 2015 was a bit of a transition year, as the council adjusted direction slightly in response to some of the city's shifting economic and social challenges, but I think it would be good for the city to get back to the orderly transition of vice mayor to mayor. This allows the vice mayor to work directly with the mayor for a year before taking on that role, and that in turn helps us better serve all of our bosses, the voters of Palo Alto. For all those reasons, I nominate Greg Schmidt for mayor.
Thank you, and Vice Mayor Schmidt, would you care to speak?
Yeah, I'd love to share my view of the role of the mayor. The mayor represents the council and the city on public occasions, would be an honor for me to do so, but the key role for mayor is as Chair of Council. There are four things that are important there. Number one, identify and get on the agenda critical policy issues. Number two, support staff in getting appropriate data out to the public on those critical policy issues. Three, welcome public and council member comments on that discussion. And four, bring to a vote before midnight, when council members, staff members, and the public are available on critical issues. It's also important in the agenda that it reflect council's role of oversight, so on the agenda should be important items on finance, budget, contracts, decisions that are being made, so council can provide their oversight. The council is the meeting point of citizens and governance, let's all work together to make sure we make it continue that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Niss.
Tom and I are sharing a mic tonight, so bear with me. First of all, I want to thank, this will come later, but Karen and Greg, thank you so much for your service this year, it's been so appreciated, and you've offered a great deal of guidance, and also, thanks to everyone who's out here in the audience, especially lots of my former colleagues, and a supervisor or two, and the rest of you, it's wonderful to see this great audience tonight. So, starting with last year, and I think a couple have already mentioned it, we're heading into 2016. We have a city council that has gone from having marked differences, I think, in early 2015, and now we are a far more collaborative and consensus-oriented governing body. However, I think 2016 is still going to be a challenge as we carry our priorities from last year, and our priorities from last year, you won't be surprised to learn, include actually finishing the comprehensive plan. We have great, great hopes for the comprehensive plan, also maintaining our infrastructure, and we've done a good job on that, but we have a lot, long way to go, and perhaps finally getting fiber to the home, that would be such an accomplishment. So, we will need a strong, balanced, and focused mayor to create these results, and I'm nominating Pat Burke tonight, who has a history of effective leadership in the private sector, the Planning and Transportation Commission, mayor in having chaired multiple city council committees, as well as regional bodies. He recognizes that these leadership roles, rather than having a strong position of what one would do, this is a chance to lead and hopefully get a good outcome within our region, a big challenge. It means that the leader must be a consensus builder, a think and communicate effectively in real time, and accept the responsibility to exercise fairness and balance to everyone. Pat has strong knowledge and insights in the range of issues that the city council must address, planning, he spent eight years on the planning commission, transportation, as I said, spent eight years on planning and transportation, finance, utilities, sustainability, community services, and finances. He has served now almost 17 years, if I'm adding it correctly, he's, has served as well as the city. This council is coalescing around measures that maintain the quality of life that our residents value, and Pat is someone who can help build that common purpose within the council. Thank you.
Councilmember Burke, do you care to speak to your nomination?
Well, thank you to Councilmember Niss for those words, and, and I would say that, just briefly, my thoughts on the role of the mayor and the needs of the council are that the mayorship role is really one of leadership and not one of authority. The responsibility of the mayor is to not only be the voice of the council when asked to be so, but also to, to lead the council forward throughout its meetings and its agenda throughout the year, to really have a focused approach and a productive approach to what it's attempting to do, and to attempt to build consensus within the governing body. The intent of, of what we want to do requires that there be at least a majority of the council, and hopefully a broad consensus around issues. So, I very much respect those responsibilities and limitations, and would look forward to providing those services to the council this year.
I see no other lights, and before we hear from one member of the public who submitted a card, and before we vote, I already have my, my first role of advice for the new mayor, and that is, you see, I'm not used to going from a script, and so I overlooked recognizing our dignitaries. So, next year, when the mayor does this, after the roll call, is recognition of the dignitaries. So, we have with us this evening, we're honored to have several people with us here, Supervisor Semidion, I don't see him because no one chose to sit in the front seats, there's, everyone's hiding out. We also have representative here from Jerry Hill's office, and I believe we were to have somebody here from Rich Gordon's office, too, I'm not sure, there we go, right beside each other, thank you. Yes, and from Anna Escho's office, we have Ann, so thank you very much for coming. Ann Ream, she has a last name, and former mayor's Larry Kline. Former vice mayor Enid Pearson. Former mayor Vic O'Jackian. Former mayor Judy Kleinberg. Former council member Emily Rensel. And I don't think we've overlooked anybody, but if we have, please make yourself known. And then, yes, you're coming, you're coming, and then we have, and then we have representing the school board, Camille Townsend from P.I. USD. And we have several people who devote much, much time, many hours, a lot of dedication, working on boards, commissions, and our community advisory committee for the comp plan. So, we have representatives here from the comp plan, CAC, we have fiber-to-the-home representatives, and library advisory commission, and when you, when you hear your group, if you just stand, that would be really great, so we can acknowledge you, stand and stay standing. So if you're on the CAC, fiber, comp plan, CAC, Parks and Rec Commission, I know we have a couple people here from the Parks and Rec Commission, I don't see anybody from the Planning and Transportation Commission, so thank you all so much for your attendance and your service. And we do have a member of the Historic Resources Board here, too, thank you very So we do have one member of the public who would care to speak to the nomination of the mayor, and that is C. Ready, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you, citizens of Palo Alto and, and the mayor. If we had a way, I think we would have Karen for mayor for 10 years, I think she's outstanding. And considering the things we needed to change, the tone, the direction, the leadership, the calmness, the integrity, all together, Karen did a great job for the eleven and a half, twelve months since she's been on the job, so outstanding work, thank you. I think Palo Alto is lucky to have someone like her, and then I think with her is Greg Schmidt, I don't know if you recall, two years ago, a year ago when we did this, I came here and also recommended Greg Schmidt to be the vice mayor, and I think that he's done an outstanding job, he's an outstanding individual, he thinks through a lot, which Palo Alto, we go through a lot of engineering and everything we do, I think he's a perfect candidate for the economy we have, and I think we are privileged to have him serve us, and I like his gray hair like mine, I think that's another one good reason, and I would also recommend, I'm going, taking a step ahead, that Pat Burke is an outstanding thought processor, and has a very good understanding of what city issues are, very detailed, I would recommend him to be the vice mayor, I'm sure that comes up the next time, but just with that team, I think we'll, we'll be ready for 2020 and beyond, and the elections are coming, so we know it's going to be a busy year. Thank you, thanks for, for the time you've given me.
Thank you, C. And I see Councilmember DeBois, you've turned your light on, is that correct? Liz, did you turn his light on?
May I speak for you, Tom?
So with that, council members, you'll see in front of you, you have a paper ballot, so at this time, if you would fill out those paper ballots, and David will come along and collect them. You can make up in your own minds what that theme music should be.
We have Councilmember Berman voting for, voting for Vice, for Councilmember Burke, we'll get this right by the end. Councilmember Burke, voting for Councilmember Burke. Councilmember DeBois, voting for Vice Mayor Schmidt. Councilmember Philseth, voting for Vice Mayor Schmidt. Mayor Holman, voting for Vice Mayor Schmidt. Councilmember Niss, voting for Councilmember Burke. Councilmember Scharf, voting for Councilmember Burke. Vice Mayor Schmidt, voting for Vice Mayor Schmidt. Councilmember Wolbach, voting for Councilmember Burke. Councilmember Burke has gotten five votes.
Thank, thank you, and we will now switch places, and I'll leave the script here for you for the rest of the meeting.
Well, thank you, and I'll, I'll just offer a few comments before we go on to election of the vice mayor. First, thank you to my colleagues for your support, and to the community for entrusting me with these responsibilities. As we look at our challenges ahead, we will need to continue the important initiatives that the city council worked on this past year, under Mayor Holman's leadership, including taking the reins in managing commercial growth, protecting our local retail, addressing parking problems, updating our comprehensive plan, and a range of other initiatives. This year, we also need to develop a plan and funding to improve our local transportation system. We must also work to protect our local affordable housing, its supply, its current supply, and our plan to address new housing obligations in ways with the least impacts on our community. We'll also be adopting an updated sustainability and climate action plan. This plan needs to provide for protecting our natural environment, creating long-term sustainable water and transportation systems, preparing for emergencies, and continuing our progress. Councilmembers may nominate themselves or another council member, and no second is required. So is this councilmember Wobak?
I'd like to nominate councilmember Greg Scharf for vice mayor.
Okay. And councilmember DeBois?
I'd like to nominate somebody who's never been vice mayor, Karen Holman.
Thank you. And any other nominees? So councilmember Wobak, would you like to speak to your nomination?
First, let me say, I think that there are actually eight people who would be very qualified to serve as vice mayor for the coming year. I've been thinking about, you know, the accomplishments, many of which have been mentioned over the past year by this council, by the community, by the staff, the challenges facing us in the coming year, and what the opportunities are in the coming year. And I think really the question is, how can we have a team that works well, that works collegially, that presents balance, that will work together to address the complex issues, and to respect and represent the diversity of views on the council and in the community? Just to recap a little bit, you know, over the last year in 2015, we've really refocused on, and focused on systemic thinking about long-term issues. We focused on resident concerns, both immediate and long-term. And we've focused on building a collegial atmosphere among the council. As councilmember Niss mentioned earlier, we started 2015 with a sense of division, and I think that we've started 2016 with a sense of unity, a sense of collective purpose. Going into 2016, we'll face a number of significant challenges, both internal and external. Internal, the financial issues that have been mentioned, staff overload, in no small part thanks to an ambitious council. It'll be important to clearly set priorities, as Mayor Bird mentioned, and to focus on recruitment and retention and among the city staff. This will all require a strong leadership team, not just the mayor, but the mayor working in collaboration with the vice mayor and the city staff. External issues facing the community, the cost of housing, transportation, and parking remain ongoing issues, along with other things that have been focused on during the year, such as airplane noise and, and the future of water security and other sustainability issues in Palo Alto. So I think that the vice mayor and the mayor working together need to present an opportunity for unity, for trust-building, collaboration, compromise, and teamwork. I think that councilmember Scharf brings a breadth of experience to that position. His experience with utilities in particular, his work representing Palo Alto on regional bodies, will be an important asset in supplementing the work that the mayor does as a number of regional issues are faced by the city in the coming year. And I think that together, they will provide clear, efficient, and experienced leadership for the city.
Thank you. And councilmember DeBois, would you like to speak to your nomination?
Yes, sure. So I think, you know, we have been divided on some issues this last year. And I think it's critical of the vice mayor as someone that's not divisive, that's demonstrated clear leadership, and the ability to work with everyone in a collegial manner. I'd also like to see some continuity, so, you know, we continue the projects we started, and we continue to make some real impacts on the quality of life for our citizens. So Karen, you know, she's served the city for a long time on both the council and the planning commission. It's kind of funny, but she has yet to be vice mayor. She's demonstrated her ability to work well with staff and the council, and I think she should be a strong partner with the mayor. Pat and Karen would make a great team. Together, they have a huge amount of experience. And I think Karen really complements Pat nicely, just kind of a left brain, right brain thing going on there. You know, Karen tends to focus on, on important issues that are, maybe less to do with the hard numbers, things, things like homelessness, in particular homelessness with veterans. I think she struck the right balance in Buena Vista this year. And she really brings that ability for everybody to, to work together. And I, and I think is evidenced by your landslide win in the last election, I think she really has tapped into the desires of the community. So, you know, for those reasons, I think her tireless, tirelessness, ability to work for the community, ability to step in when the mayor's not available, and keep us focused on important priorities, I'd support Karen for vice mayor.
And the nominees are also welcome to speak. Councilmember Scharf?
Thank you. And thank you, councilmember Wobak, for those kind words. I'm honored to be nominated for vice mayor. As a former vice mayor, I understand the importance of working closely with the mayor, council, and staff to implement the council's and community's shared vision, and I mean shared vision. Today begins my seventh year on council. And what has struck me the most is not the differences among councilmembers, but the unanimity of council. The vision is shared, the differences that we have are usually about how to achieve a shared goal. Mayor Bird has spoken eloquently about his vision and priorities for the coming year. I support that vision and believe that 2016 is a critical year in which we can bring to fruition much of that vision. We also need to continue to lay the groundwork for achieving the priorities and vision that council's been pursuing over the past couple of years. As Mayor Bird said, this is not a one-year process. It's accomplishing, bringing home what we can, and laying the groundwork so the following year, we can achieve more. And that's what I believe we need to do. We all want a city that is environmentally sustainable, fiscally sustainable, and whose quality of life is sustainable and doesn't degrade over time. We have accomplished some great things on the environmental sustainability front, from carbon neutral to banning plastic bags and composting, and of course, there's more we can do. And we will be doing it and discussing it at our upcoming Sustainability Summit. We have also made a lot of progress towards a sustainable fiscal future over my seven years on the council. But that is something we need to be diligent about moving forward, as seemingly small decisions can have long-term financial implications. Additionally, as residents of Palo Alto, we want a sustainable quality of life. That means that we, as a council, need to work together and listen to our community as we tackle the issues of traffic congestion, housing, and development. I believe that Mayor Bird and I would work well together in leading the council towards actionable steps to ensure we maintain our quality of life here in Palo Alto while taking into account the diverse interests of our community. This will take not only the council working together, but also the council setting clear priorities, as Mayor Bird said, for staff, and clearly establishing what we want to accomplish this year. As vice mayor, I intend to work closely with the mayor, council members, and the community to achieve our shared vision of a sustainable Palo Alto, and would ask for your support from me as vice mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Yes, and thank you. And thank you to councilmember DeBois for your kind words. I really very much appreciate them. So councilmember DeBois used a word that I think is really applicable in this case, and that's the word continuity. And I think, especially with the election of the mayor, continuity is, is an issue here. And I've worked with councilmember Bird, not only as a part of Neighborhood Association, but on the Planning and Transportation Commission, on the South of Forest Avenue Working Group, on the Planning and Transportation Commission, and now in the city council. So I've had a long history of working with councilmember Bird and would be, I think, a good, a good partner in that regard. I'll be fairly brief here. You know, we have a lot of things that we have accomplished this year, a very long list of things that we've accomplished, and a lot of things that we need to continue. And hopefully, that now that we've gotten some things in place, we can continue in even a more focused manner. And some of those, just those two or three here, but are kind of on the forefront for me are the environment and our commitment to the environment, our continued commitment to the environment. Housing and homelessness, those are certainly high on my list, and it's most especially the homelessness. And traffic and transportation congestion relief. And I was part of a nine-mayor, nine-member mayor and city council, excuse me, city manager group that worked together to send a communication to, to VTA to talk about congestion relief and work for a study there. It's that kind of, that kind of experience that you get as being a mayor that, and since I have skipped being vice mayor all these years, I think it's one that I can work in a very good support role. The mayor, the vice mayor does step in for the mayor also when the mayor is out of town or unable, or has multiple conflicts, which can happen on the same day. So, and I'm, I'm ready, willing, and able to fill that role. And going back to the continuity thing, I guess the last thing I would say about this is just that my engine is already warmed up. So I'd appreciate your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one member of the public to speak, Richard Brand. And, okay. And I also want to note that former mayor Gail Woolley has joined us. Welcome, Richard.
Yes, good evening, and happy new year to all. And I just want to add a few comments here. I think we have a chance, being the city that's become the wonder city in Palo Alto with a wonder, wonder team here. And I'm speaking, Mayor Bird, congratulations, because I think you're great at this, and I really recommend that people vote for Vice, Karen Holman as vice mayor. And I think the two working together are going to continue the good work that's happened, Pat, under your, your regime several years ago, and Mayor Holman this past year, as you've heard. I think we have the opportunity to work staff. I've actually seen, because I've, on several committees, the staff working well with Karen Holman, and I think that's important, Pat, that that'll support the work that you're going to be needing to do, working with Jim's team, which is doing a great job. So I didn't expect to have to do this, but I think this is a real opportunity for the city to move forward, and I encourage all of you to vote for Karen Holman for vice mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Berman, were you wanting to speak? Okay.
Mayor Bird, I have the tally. We have councilmember Berman voting for councilmember Scharf. Mayor Bird voting for councilmember Scharf. Councilmember DeBois voting for councilmember Holman. Councilmember Philseth voting for councilmember Holman. Councilmember Holman voting for councilmember Holman. Councilmember Niss voting for councilmember Scharf. Councilmember Scharf voting for councilmember Scharf. Councilmember Schmidt voting for councilmember Holman. And councilmember Wobak voting for councilmember Scharf. Councilmember Scharf has received five votes.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Scharf, did you wish to make any additional comments?
Just that I really look forward to the upcoming year, and thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you. And our next order of business is a resolution recognizing the work of former mayor Holman this last year. And what we need is first, the resolution to be read, to be followed by a motion to approve the resolution. And councilmember Schmidt, I think you've agreed to read this on behalf of the council. Thank you.
Resolution. Whereas Karen Holman served as mayor of the city of Palo Alto from January 5th, 2015 through January 4th, 2016. And whereas Karen Holman provided effective regional and citywide leadership on issues facing the city of Palo Alto, focusing on the city's land use and environmental policies through regional groups, as well as improving outreach to businesses and neighborhoods. And whereas Karen Holman coordinated work with city staff and represented the city on countless occasions throughout the year. And whereas Karen Holman was instrumental in initiating and successfully implementing the city council's 2015 priority of healthy city, healthy community, including convening and chairing a citizens advisory committee to draft a healthy city, healthy community resolution. And whereas Karen Holman, during her term as mayor, was a strong advocate for small business and retail preservation throughout the city, working hard to retain and promote a vital retail sector throughout the city. Karen conceived of and initiated the Meet the Street event, strengthening the sense of community between local downtown merchants and the public for an evening of food, fashion, and music. And whereas Karen Holman was a strong and continuing advocate for historical preservation in the Palo Alto History Museum. And whereas Karen initiated a moving tribute to Palo Alto veterans in observance of Veterans' Day. And Karen improved the May Fett Parade, an important Palo Alto tradition, by moving the parade route to provide for more intergenerational inclusion. And whereas Karen led the R Palo Alto, the summit events, and worked to initiate the Comprehensive Plan Update Citizens Advisory Committee. And whereas Karen promoted Palo Alto Perry, goodwill ambassador based on the original Palo Alto Perry, the barren park Dunkian model for Dunkian Shrek to the Palo Alto community, forging a new Palo Alto icon to celebrate the whimsical and softer side of Palo Alto. And whereas Karen Holman encouraged citizen input to city governance in a variety of formats throughout the year, spent time with community leaders and citizens to understand their positions and include such views in council deliberations. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the council of the city of Palo Alto hereby gratefully records its sincere thanks and appreciation to Karen Holman for meritorious service rendered and contributions made during her term as mayor. I move approval of the resolution.
Thank you. And before voting on it, we'd like to give members of the council and members of the public an opportunity to speak to the resolution. And I see we do have some speakers. So first, why don't we allow the members of the public to speak? And our first speaker is Lisa Chung, and to be followed by Catherine Martinew.
I will be brief, since I know there's a long line of people who'd wish outgoing Mayor Holman very well. I represent the office of Senator Jerry Hill. Senator Hill is in Sacramento, regrets he cannot be here today, but he wishes me to convey his warmest congratulations for his very successful year, and your leadership has been felt throughout Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Martinew, to be followed by Faith Bell.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Burt. I'm here to say a little more about the environmental leadership of Karen Holman. She mentioned that it still is a priority for this council, and the resolution mentioned it too. But I want to nominate Karen to be the chief tree advocate for Palo Alto. All of you actually are tree advocates and have been, and I didn't know we could do this, I didn't know until today. So I would have been here to bestow this distinction to many of you. But Karen, she started her term last year with her mayor tree planting, and it will be your turn, Pat, very soon too. And she took a real liking for her tree, it's a Gingko at Rinconada Library. And in a way, she protected it, she watered it during the drought. Karen has always been an advocate for the trees. But this year, because of all of the challenges, especially with the drought and the conservation measures, the water conservation measures that compounded the effect of the lack of rain, Karen took an active role. She went herself to water her tree in front of Rinconada Library. I don't know exactly how she brought the water. And then she called me to water the tree, and then she talked to the staff. She also, of course, led the adoption of the Urban Forest Master Plan. And she gave to the staff and the Urban Forest Master Plan team some very, very good directions in terms of including more about the overall ecosystem of the city and the green infrastructure in the plan, and coming up with solutions to bring the south of Palo Alto canopy closer to the canopy cover of north Palo Alto. And I believe that the council will be very pleased when staff presents preliminary results very soon. So, you know, in a word, we could not be happier with Karen's advocacy for the trees. She's used the dais, and she's used her letters, her monthly letters, to educate the whole population and the residents of Palo Alto, and we're very grateful for that, and thank you for your amazing partnership. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you. Faith Bell, to be followed by former Mayor Yoriko Kishimoto.
Greetings to our honored council members, community members at large, and congratulations to the newly elected mayor and vice mayor. I won't say that I wasn't disappointed. I am disappointed not to see Karen as our vice mayor, but I'm sure you'll all do beautifully. As a local small business owner, Bell's Bookstore, Emerson Street, it's been wonderful to have Mayor Holman as our mayor. She's extended herself in exemplary manner to reach the business community. I hope that we'll see some consistent follow-through on that, because it's been a huge change for us in the business community to see that, and it's been very welcome. She's worked to preserve the ground floor retail environment. She's addressed difficult parking issues. She instigated the first Meet the Street event, in which the smaller side streets got a chance to highlight their offerings in a way we never have before. We were able to coordinate our 80th anniversary party with that event, and we got over 700 people coming. I call that a success. As an environmentalist, I appreciate that Mayor Holman has sought creative ways in which to encourage recycling, composting, and reuse, and has established the preservation and creative reuse of historic buildings as a priority. Thank you for that. On other fronts, she's tirelessly forged strong connections between departments and with neighboring cities, reestablished transparency in city government, very important, and all with an even hand, and a remarkable ability to chair meetings in a professional and civilized fashion. Thank you, Mayor Holman, for your dedication and for guiding our city so well.
Thank you. And our final speaker is former Mayor Yoriko Kishimoto. Oh, we have one more speaker after that, Stephanie Munoz.
Thank you. Well, congratulations to the new mayor and vice mayor. Thank you to Greg Schmidt for your good vice mayorship. It's been a pure pleasure to watch our outgoing mayor, Karen Holman, this last year. She's been an outstanding and very effective mayor. You just spoke about all the criteria which makes a great mayor, bringing out the best in each council member, and actually, I would add, from the members of the public as well, prioritizing and bringing focus to the most important issues, and bringing them to a productive vote. And that calls for a real mastery of process and strong leadership that we all took advantage of. We saw the grace that you lead the meetings with and hard work. I'm a former member, I'm not used to these beeps either. So, but I just want to say, thank you so much for representing the community so well. I think you've made a huge difference. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Stephanie Munoz, and we have two more cards, to be followed by Shawnee Kleinhouse.
Happy New Year, all of you. Thank you, Karen. You say to yourself sometimes, well, gee, if Karen couldn't do it, then nobody can. But actually, everybody has a different kind of a chance, a different kind of a set of circumstances, a different understanding from the rest of the community for the support that you're going to get. I bitterly regret that I didn't fight harder for that gym, the Birch Clark Gym, for the women's shelter, bitterly. But there's another year, there's another cause. I think Greg Scharf will be a great vice mayor, especially with respect to the small business, because that's his fort, is being nice to people. And I think that'll work very well. And I admire all of you. I respect all of you, and I'm very, very grateful for the time you put in. There's something I want to say. The problems that you're facing are not of your making. Well, some are, and to some extent, they are. But there are storms brewed in other men's waters. For instance, here are the veterans, the homeless, scandalous! This is not our fault. I mean, not our fault as Palo Altons, it's our fault as the entire United States. We allowed people to be conscripted, to be removed from their own control of their own lives. That's a whole lot worse than a wealth tax on 100% of your wealth, to tell you you have to go stand in front of a cannon and be shot at. But it's the United States government that should be responsible for those homeless veterans making a home for them. I believe the city of Palo Alto should go in with the other cities in California. The reason the veterans are here is because the climate's better, and you cannot stay out in the cold weather in, I don't know, Kansas and the Great Plains. So we ought to make sure that those properties that are surplus property go to help the veterans, go to help education, go to help other things. And I think I can tell you more, but that's enough for now. Thank you. Thank you very much for everything you've done, every one of you. Thanks.
Thank you. Shawnee Kleinhouse, to be followed by Maura Oomen.
Good evening. Congratulations, Mayor Burt and Vice Mayor Schmidt. I'm here on behalf of Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society, the Sierra Club, as well as a resident of Palo Alto, to thank Karen Holman for her service. Karen, you have provided outstanding attention to the aesthetic of the city, its ecology, and its people, and we thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Maura Oomen, to be followed by Arthur Keller.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maura Oomen. I'm the executive director of Blossom Birth Services. And on behalf of Blossom, a nonprofit that serves expecting new families in the area, I want to thank Karen Holman for all of her hard work this year. We're on California Avenue, and she's done a really amazing job of trying to support small businesses on California Avenue. Unfortunately, Blossom will be losing its lease. We've been in Palo Alto for over 16 years, and so we're going to be looking for a new home. I hope it'll be here in Palo Alto, but it might be further up or down the peninsula. But Karen Holman has been extremely instrumental in helping us as we transition, so I want to thank her and wish her all the best, and hopefully she'll have some time, because I know she's been emailing me at sometimes even 2:00 a.m., so I know she's been working hard, day in and day out. So hopefully she'll get a good night's rest, and it looks like she might be getting over something right now, so I hope you feel better soon. Thanks so much, Karen.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Arthur Keller.
Congratulations, Mayor Burt, and congratulations, Vice Mayor Greg Scharf. I'm sure you'll do ably in your posts, and I would like to thank outgoing Mayor Karen Holman for her job in healing the city and bringing us back together. After all, the last election was a very divisive election, and the past, we have had some divisiveness on the city council, and we didn't see any of that this year. And that is a testament to the work of Karen in bringing us all together and bringing a spirit of collegiality. And I hope that the future leadership of the city continues that spirit of collegiality, because I think that bringing us together is very important, and when we all work together, we can accomplish a lot more than when we operate more divisively. So I'd like to thank Karen for her work in healing the city, bringing us all together after a divisive campaign.
Thank you. And on that note, we are ready to vote on the resolution. Lights are not working at the moment. Oh, there we go. Everybody? Great. And that passes unanimously. So before asking former Mayor Holman to speak to the resolution, I think we have some plaques that we can present out in front. Would you care to join? Yes, you're welcome to do so. Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, before it's all over, I would just like to say, thank Karen for her hard work this year. I think she was at every event. It was kind of incredible how much. And not only were you at the ceremony events, but you were also present on important policy issues. I think we made some important progress. People have mentioned retail protection, limiting office growth, maybe to provide more space for housing, our perfume permit program. And I think you really were the glue that held together what could have been a very fractious council. I also want to thank you for the new events. I think the Veterans' Day ceremony was terrific, and Meet the Street, those are great additions that I hope continue. And just on a personal level, I wanted to thank you for your vice and assistant as a first-year council member. I really appreciated it. So thank you for caring and just working so hard.
Thank you.
I've got to cozy back up to Tom. I particularly want to call out something that Karen did this year, and that I was supportive of her in doing that, which was our new Healthy Communities and Healthy Cities aim and our resolution that is now in place. I know Karen has been pushing this for a number of years. I came back on the council, and that's, as you all know, health is one of my particular issues. And we were able this year, with Karen chairing it and me co-chairing it, I think, to bring it to fruition, and we intend to continue it. So Karen, thank you for that. That was an important initiative, and I think one that is going to now be present in most cities and also will be a part of the comprehensive plan. And an important part, as we think of our infrastructure and go forward, that we need this kind of thrust toward health, as well as we need a thrust toward all the other amenities that we add to our comprehensive plan. So thanks, Karen.
Thank you. And Councilmember Wolbach.
First, I'd like to echo the comments by Councilmember DuBois. As a first-year council member, I've appreciated your counsel, and you've never steered me wrong, and my thanks for that. Also, the comments by former planning commissioner, Arthur Keller, I think were completely on point. What you've done to manage a contentious, complex year with diverse community and council viewpoints and keep us together has been quite remarkable and deserves repeated commendation. Also, the example, I think, that you've set for each of us on council, whether we're new or veterans on the council, and for everyone in the community, by demonstrating the importance of moral leadership, should not be discounted. Your focus on the homeless and others who are most at risk in our community is something I personally appreciate. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to share my comments. As mayor, Councilmember Holman brought just great energy and ideas and initiatives that I believe were fully embraced by the community. And she also, as others have mentioned, really provided leadership for the council over the course of the year to move toward a more shared vision that I think we've heard a number of people speak about, as that this council has come together around a set of shared community values. And I also want to emphasize Councilmember Holman's real dedication to fairness, to not only all the members of the council, but all the members of the community. And this is a deeply held value for her, and we could all see this throughout the course of the year, and we really value it and respect it. And finally, I'd like to say that the strong leadership that she showed this year, I think, is something that is valued by the council and portends to future leadership roles on the council, and I look forward to that as well. So on that note, Mayor Holman, or former Mayor Holman, would you like to speak to your
Well, thank you all very much, and thank you to members of the community who came and additionally who spoke. First, congratulations to the new mayor and vice mayor. Congratulations. And I hope one of the things that has happened this year is we've created a collegial environment. And that collegiality, I think, extends to staff, too. It's been an amazing year this year working with staff, and I thought about listing off some people on staff. some people on staff who are not frontline people, but who are just pitch in. I mean, you could hardly say more, just they pitch in, and they generate product, and they effort to good end. And I thought about doing that, but in spite of myself, I would forget somebody, and somebody would feel left out, and that certainly was not my intention. But there are some of you I can see now and look at and just know that I thank you from the bottom of my heart. You've been just great support this year and great inspiration, and I really appreciate that. To Catherine Martin, I want to know if a hat comes with the job. It'd be my honor to wear a badge of canopy. You know, it's been a really busy year. I told Jim earlier today that when I did the State of the City, and Claudia Keith knows this as well, I was trying to find out if we could have the, if we would have any problem in using the Road Runner cartoon, because it's kind of what this year I knew it was going to be like, and it's kind of what it has been like. And those of you over a certain age certainly will know what I'm talking about. It's the Road Runner just zipping across the screen, and that's kind of a lot what this year has been about. I'm hoping that we have a number of things in place at this point in time that will help us to focus more even on the comprehensive plan and accomplishing the completion of that. We've gotten some things in place, like putting an office cap in place. We've got retail protections in place citywide, and we have a PC moratorium. So we've taken some things off the table that could cause distractions for this next year. Not to say other things won't come up. We have a number of other things that we want to accomplish, but those things, I think, will help us, you know, have a stable place to start from, so we're not chasing a moving target. So I think having those in place and accomplished, I appreciate staff and colleagues working with the whole council and community on that. And that said, you know, we have accomplished a lot, and the environment is one of the primary things that we almost always focus on. And yet, even with our focus on the environment and our continued initiatives there, we can't create blue skies for everyone. We've not been able to do that. We still have a homeless population that needs to be served. And I could mention the veterans homelessness among that population, but it's really the whole homeless population, so I hope we can create more blue skies. We had a really, I think, successful Veterans Appreciation Event this year. It's the first one we've ever done, and at the same time, we couldn't end war. So, you know, we aim high. We aim high here, and we need to continue to aim high. But we know that we can't accomplish everything, but that doesn't mean we should lower our sights. This year, we, with staff, took it to the streets, literally, in a couple of different ways. We did the Meet the Street event, which was an initiative that helped, as Faith Bell spoke, that introduced a lot of people who had not visited before, some of the side-street businesses. And it was, in many ways, a successful event, and at least some aspects of that will be continuing next year. It's a way to get people to introduce themselves, or get introduced to the new stores, and the stores that have even been there for a long time that people haven't discovered because they're on the side-street, because they're on not the main drag. And we also took it to the streets by visiting neighborhoods. We, along with some colleagues who also signed onto a colleague's memo, we had our first two neighborhood town hall meetings, and those stretched from San Antonio Road to San Francisco Creek. We had neighborhoods that extended that far that came together for a couple of town hall meetings, and by all accounts, they seemed to be very successful and well-received. So, you know, the most important thing that we do here up on this dais and out in the public is represent you, the public. And I thought what I would do, and I'm sorry, I meant to have these up on the screen, I just, I got cold and it just didn't happen, but I thought I'd read a couple of letters. They're brief, but they're from kids in the community. And we start them young in this community, but I think you'll see that these are representative of the public at large. So this one was dated December 16th of this year. Dear Mayor Holman, I have a problem. Can you please help me? Most of the people just drop stuff instead of throwing them in the trash can. Can you please put signs that say, "Please do not litter." P.S. I'm still a first grader. And the other one is, I think you'll see how it's representative of the public at large, too. Again, we start them young. And this one was actually sent more than a year ago, but, Dear Mayor, I need you to have a talk with everybody that litters, because I saw 16 cigarettes, two thumbtacks, and a pen all on the ground, and many other things, too. I've had enough. So, you know, we do start them early here, and I think that the comments from these kids do mirror, quite frankly, the community's comments. So most importantly, I want to thank all of you. It is, it's the public. Sorry. It's you, the public, that make this all worthwhile. It's you, the public, that make this place what it is. I'm so sorry. It's your commitment, your intelligence, your intellect, your experience, your expertise, your time, and your care, that you care so much about this community. It has been my pleasure and honor to serve you this year, and I look forward to another productive year of this council, working together as colleagues, and I thank you all very much.
Thank you. Before our final item, which is to hear from members of the public on items not otherwise on the agenda, or known as our oral communications, I just would like to take this opportunity to remind members of the audience that we have some really important and valuable events coming up that are really supported by community engagement. So we have a series of our comprehensive plan events, but most immediately, we have our Sustainability and Climate Action Summit on the afternoon of Sunday, the 24th of January, at Mitchell Park. And this is an event that will inform the council and the community about a plan that is really our vision for the next 30 years or more in the sustainability of this community. And so we would very much value your participation, and you can find information on it on the city website. And we have just, we have six speakers under oral communication, and I'm sure the audience will welcome brevity. You have up to three minutes to speak. The first speaker is Jennifer Landisman, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
Thank you, Mayor Holman, for your support this year. Congratulations, Mayor Burt, Vice Mayor Scharf. I'm here to let you know that this is a time of crisis for Palo Alto residents experiencing the mean and brutal onslaught of low-flying airplanes bound to SFO. Crisis, not in the sense that the world is about to go under, but in the sense that the data that has been provided to us directly by the Federal Aviation Administration shows that a massive amount of airplane noise and pollution has been shifted to us, to Palo And because at least some would like to make the concentration of routes over Palo Alto, which SFO itself calls the perfect storm, the new status quo. We're at an inflection point in the history of this issue, perhaps in the history of the town in terms of livability, so the time to stop this is now. There are countless studies that show that noise emitted by the great number of airplanes overflying our community does great harm to the growth and development of children, their learning. Every day that we let this situation persist without doing everything in our power to stop it is a day too many. So Mayor, Vice Mayor, please help lead in the regional negotiations with the FAA to fix this, and please help to make this work a priority this year. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. And before too many people leave, I've been corrected that the location of the Sustainability Summit will be Jordan Middle School on the 24th. Stephanie Munoz to be followed by Keith Bennett.
Good evening again. Councilmembers and Mayor Burt, you know, Joan of Arc is a hard act to follow, but every person brings his own personality and his own qualities to the job of mayor. Pat Burt, to me, is the person who makes the word politician a compliment rather than an insult. And he's the one who says, "God, give me the grace to prevail and to fight for what I believe in, and to accept what I cannot change, and the wisdom to know the difference." I'm hoping that during this coming year, I'll be able to change your mind about some things that might not be possible. Housing, healthcare, the things that would be advantageous, that people aren't looking at in exactly the right way. If we, if people got the health insurance on their social security the way they were supposed to back in 1885, and they do every place else, think of how much that would save the county. Oh, there he is. Yes, and the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Keith Bennett to be followed by Esther Nigenda.
Good evening and congratulations on new positions. I'm here on behalf of Save Palo Alto's Groundwater. I know that this issue will be coming up before the full council sometime this month, and I wanted to give comments now, also in time for staff to hear them, so that they can consider our input as they formulate plans. Next slide. So the first point, people have said we should only be concerned about significant amounts of water. This graph here gives the per capita allocation of the state water project for the Santa Clara Valley Water District in 2016. It's 715 gallons. The amount of water that was removed for basement construction, de-watering of residential basements in Palo Alto on a per capita basis last year was 1.27 times that. So I think it's a significant amount of water. Next slide. The other thing is people have brought up that the water that we take out is not potable. However, non-potable water can substitute and does substitute for potable water in many applications. This is a flyer which we received recently, just indicates that Palo Alto does value non-potable water and gives rebates for various containers to collect rainwater. The next thing I want to point out is that the amount of water taken from beneath a house, and this is based on 9 million gallons and a 10,000-square-foot lot, is equivalent to a column of water on that property of 120 feet deep. The point of this slide is that the vast majority of that water is removed from under surrounding properties. Next slide. And the final point is staff had suggested that sheet piling might be a good method. It was brought up that sheet piling might be noisy, and I did some looking. There is at least one method known as the silent piler method. It's a static hydraulic press-in method. And the next thing is I'll show you a short promotional video for this method, but it should be usable in residential neighborhoods. That's it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Esther Nigenda.
Good evening and congratulations to the new mayor and vice mayor. We'll just show the short video for the silent piler, which should, we hope, be an alternative method for, instead of the watering, we could use this. I'm glad I didn't have to explain that personally, but it looks like this could be useful for, instead of de-watering, to build basements. Thank you.
And I should say that we won't be accepting any more speaker cards after this time. Our next speaker is Rita Verrell, to be followed by Renee Wood.
Good evening and congratulations to the new mayor and vice mayor, and it was wonderful working with you, Mayor Holman. I would like to clarify that safepalowaltosgroundwater.org is not against building residential basements. Our focus remains on de-watering and the treatment of community groundwater as a vital community resource, not as construction waste. The Policy and Services Committee voted unanimously, and we thank you, to send this issue of de-watering to the full city council for discussion. The Department of Public Works will present a three-tiered approach, including formulation of a site-specific plan for any property issued a de-watering permit. We ask the city council to direct staff to include in their recommendations the following, and I will be giving you each a little more information on this. Number one, all community groundwater removed during construction shall be directed and/or reused. Number two, all extracted groundwater shall be metered. This will provide, for the first time, an accurate measurement of the amount of pumped groundwater. Number three, during de-watering, the amount of permitted groundwater extraction shall not exceed a volume equivalent to water covering the lot to a depth of five feet. Mr. Bennett will be sending you additional information regarding the calculation of this amount. Previously, as you know, pumping could continue for six months, and the amount of groundwater extraction was unlimited. Number four, the de-watering process shall be limited to one month, not six. Best construction practices, specifically having all contractors and subcontractors sequentially scheduled, should reduce excessive de-watering. Members of the public came forward during the Policy and Services Committee meeting and indicated this was possible. Number five, a basement design which does not impede the flow of water through the surrounding soils, especially during normal or exceptional rainfall, shall be part of all site-specific plans. In addition, we request the city council apply the same planning and review requirements to all basement construction requiring de-watering that apply to a two-story home. Application of the fair Application of the FAR and limiting basement depth, as previously discussed, could be helpful. Members of safepalowaltosgroundwater.org look forward to continuing our work with the council and staff to address the issues we discussed this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Renee Wood, and our final speaker, Ruth Lowey.
Good evening. I extend my congratulations to the new mayor and vice mayor also. My name is Renee Wood, and I'm from Sheffield, Massachusetts. I'm hoping that you will let me speak tonight. My background is similar to many of yours in that I am a member, or have been a member, of our town's Select Board and Planning Commission. I have followed safepalowaltosgroundwater.org's work and believe that their and your efforts are cutting-edge. I've been impressed with the rigor of their work, their commitment to fact-based data from respected organizations, and the modest, implementable nature of their requests to the council. I'm also impressed with the council's openness to their work and your collaborative approach. This discussion is not anti-basement. Rather, it is about smarter, more thoughtful basement construction when de-watering is required. Construction which becomes mindful of its impact on groundwater resources. Their requests are reasonable, measurable, data-driven, and can be implemented prior to the issuance of de-watering permits in April. Just as important, their requests provide a balance, one based on equity, between the owner building a basement requiring de-watering and neighboring property owners. I have been a very frequent visitor to Palo Alto for 30 years and have watched this city grow, property become astronomically valuable, and services and lifestyle become second to none, in part because of your focus on sustainability, which Mayor Burke spoke of in his acceptance remarks. Sustainability for water usage has included in the past, but it's not been limited to, providing compensation to residents who switch to low-water landscaping, mandatory graywater systems, and the rebates that are currently in place that were mentioned earlier. It is only reasonable and common sense to augment these auctions with the, these actions with the de-watering policies requested here tonight. I respectfully ask the council to grant their requests, and thank you for receiving my comments.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Ruth Lowey.
Good evening, Ruth Lowey. I want to thank Karen Holman and Greg Schmidt for their wonderful leadership this year and for making, as many have said, a very thoughtful and collaborative year. And congratulations to our new mayor, Pat Burt, and to Vice Mayor Greg Scharf. And I hope that your leadership will continue this very wonderful year that we've had. The quality of life is somewhat improving, and we will hope that you can continue on with that. I'd like to also follow up on the comment of the, I think, first speaker about the airplane noise. I've been very vocal, written, phone calls, et cetera, and I thank Joe Semidion and Anna Eshu for their efforts, for trying to do something about the continued airplane noise. Between 6:00 in the morning and 1:00 a.m. the next morning, airplanes are flying low over our homes in the Barron Park neighborhood where I live, and I know in many other neighborhoods. Frankly, at midnight, when I'm nice and warm and don't want to jump out of bed and make phone calls to complain to the noise abatement, or at 6:00 in the morning when I'd like to spend another half an hour sleeping, some of those times the planes seem to be at their loudest. So, mostly during the day, there are almost no times when it's quiet overhead. So, anything that the city council can do to help mitigate that would be most appreciated by all of us. So, thank you and congratulations, and thank you for your efforts and your time.
Thank you. And on that note, our meeting is adjourned, and we'd like to invite everyone to the lobby to join us for refreshments.